Call the School District of North Fondleac Board Meeting to order Monday, March 24th, at 7:04 in the district meeting. Next item on your agenda is roll call.
Chisholm?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Goldowski?
Yes.
Haacke?
Yes.
And then Pele?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is report on public notice, Mr. Sayoff.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Public notices and agendas were mailed to the Fondleac reporter, radio station KFIZ, KFIZ 107, WFTL radio, and agendas were posted in the district office, US Banky Municipal Building, on Friday, March 21st, 2014.
Excellent. Next item on our agenda is the pledge allegiance. Please stand and remove that gear, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Do board members have any noted changes? Seeing none, we'll approve the minutes as presented. Next item on our agenda is the credit report. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Cash balance on hand starting February 24th, 2014 was $129,833.97. With transfers, total receipts were $2,000, I'm sorry, $2,281.65. Expenditures for the month totaled $1,273,577, leaving cash on, cash balance on hand as of March 24th, 2014, $54,604.51. Also, as distributed to the board, there are bills recommended for payment in the amount of $1,262,326.14, and I will present that to the board for action.
Motion.
One second. Second by Mr. Pele. Discussion? Questions on the budget? Seeing none, roll call.
Duffy?
Yes.
Pele?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Goldowski?
Yes.
Haacke? Motion carried.
Okay, next item on our agenda is the clerk's report, Mr. Haacke.
We have one item correspondence. Thank you note for memorial that the district donated. And, Mr. Sayoff, if I can't read the signature there, if you could help me with that.
That's Julie Evers. She works at Airmark and her father had passed away. Her father left.
Okay. And then, for the donations report, number of donations received this month. First, machining tools from Dennis Palm at Ram Tool in Grafton. An Antigua baritone saxophone valued at $2,600 from George and Vicky Crew. Cutlery from Gail Greisler and Jim Ronaine from Airmark, our fleet service people. Electrical PVC from Mark Lisa, Lisa Electric. Fifteen knit hats from Pat Lopenschlager. And stained glass for the Alternative Learning Center from John and Bonnie Abler at the Abler Glass Studio.
Okay, next item on our agenda is student council report.
Our student council family night went well this year. We had lots of positive feedback and I am very proud of our student council. The families look like they enjoy themselves and I'm sure the student council members had fun as well. The next thing on our agenda is student council convention, which is April 27th to the 28th. Twelve student council members are attending and we will be competing in competitions and attending leadership sessions as well as meeting new people. Student council is also funding, having a car wash fundraiser Sunday, May 18th, to raise money for our next student council president to go to leadership camp in the summer.
Next item on our agenda is citizens input. I will open up citizens input at 7:08. Any citizen wishing to be heard? Again, any citizen wishing to be heard?
Someone wants to be heard.
A call-in? A call-in? We don't have call-ins yet. Not yet. And one final time, any citizen wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the citizens input at 7:09. Next item on our agenda is superintendent's report, Mr. Sayoff.
We go a little off of script here. Today, we have a great audience. We're very fortunate to have had a man in this community serve the school district North Fondleac for nine years, elected in the first Tuesday of April in 2006, or five, 2005, I believe it was, and served for three terms and at this time has decided, or has decided but knows that there's other things and time just is getting away and he's done a great job and we really appreciate everything that John Goldowski's done for us. So at this time, I just want to, on behalf of the school district North Fondleac, the Board of Education, all the students and community and staff and myself, thank you for your service, thank you for asking some really difficult questions, for supporting students and learning, supporting our community. And our district, I believe, is much better now than nine years when you came to the board and you've helped us get better, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I'm very honored to be able to have done that for nine years, the confidence and the people to let me to do that for them. And, you know, it's something that was a small part of a big thing, you know, and we got some good people here. The board's been absolutely wonderful to work with. You know, we've had some discussions, sometime we agreed, sometime we disagreed, but today, Aaron, when I stopped to talk to you, I told you what I thought about you, that no matter what happens, you won't find a guy who'll work harder for North Fondleac than Aaron Sayoff. Now, Aaron Buss is can, working for you guys, and I do appreciate that. Like I said, we never, we didn't always agree on things, for sure, we had some good active debate, but I think he is doing a great job and I think that whoever fills his seat here will do probably a better job than I will. You need to have a lot of passion to be out here because you guys deserve, you know, someone like that who's going to spend some time and put the effort in to make sure that the district moves forward. So, once again, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. A little overwhelmed by the applause, but like I said, I feel honored to be able to have done that for nine years, so. Whoever else comes in, good luck to them. All right?
Thank you very much.
You can open that up sometime, if that's a little token appreciation from the district.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right, now, at this time, we have the opportunity to honor and recognize our Winter All Conference athletes. We had more this year, I think, than we've ever had in winter for our three, our, well, our three main sports of wrestling, boys' basketball and girls' basketball. And at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Mike McDowell, who's our athletic director. And I see in the crowd, we have a good showing of our athletes and parents and support, so at this time, we'll turn it over to Mike.
Just real quickly, you know, recap on, on seasons and where we're at and where we're going, and I would look to see next year that we open up the vehicle doors, because we're going to be incorporating more people, just as far as people that we have coming up, you know, for girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and the wrestling. I'll start off with wrestling first, because I was a wrestler in high school and in college and it's near my heart, I'm learning the sport of basketball and I'm very passionate and now I'm seeing both the boys' and girls' games religiously. We had an opportunity, and with the board approval, to co-op with St. Mary's Springs Academy. And, you know, starting off with baby steps and getting them back into the sport of wrestling, which they were really thankful for and a lot of support there from the families that we had. We had two gentlemen come off of wrestling and one of them also received.
And I'll speak, Ann Burnett, that's Joel's mom, had texted me a few times and actually called me, they were very excited that Joel was invited, he took second place, he was second team All-Conference, correct? And I think this is his first year of wrestling.
Yes.
So once he figures, once he figures out what he's doing, Katie, fire the door, it's going to be really cool. He had baseball practice till eight, but what Ann wanted me to share with you is the great teamwork, the great experience from Coach Gable and Coach Forsyte that the Springs had. We had two really dedicated wrestlers from the Spring, we were hoping to double that every year, if not get that higher. And she just wanted to say, on behalf of her son, even though they might not have been huge numbers, but on behalf of her son and also Strabell, they really, they had a great experience coming out here and being part of the team. And she just wanted to make sure that I shared that with the boards, that thank you for allowing this co-op to happen.
And we opened it up to the middle school as well, and we have some middle schoolers that are, that are working with us as well and growing the program and incorporating and infusing both schools. And I know that was a question when we co-opted with, with hockey, was the acceptance and bringing about the acceptance in. And Doug Forsyte embraced it wholeheartedly, in fact, the uniforms that we have are Oriole uniforms, but when they get to the championship match, the boys from St. Mary's Springs Academy have an opportunity to turn their singlets inside out and then on the other side would be St. Mary's Springs Academy. At the beginning of the year, it was a great opportunity, with the help of the bankies and a generous donation, we were able to get a record board up and erected, it was very nice. We had alumni bank time and it was a great turnout. I've never seen crowds that we have had in recent years and I know from the banquet we had last night for wrestling, you know, Doug was rejuvenated with, with new energy and great positive role models that we have. In fact, the representation here, I think we pretty much have everybody from the All-Conference. If you gentlemen could stand up, earning in, in going through here, and I'll just read it so I get everything correctly. Noah Gable, first team All-Conference in wrestling. We already talked about Joe Burnett. Then we have Austin Hernandez, honorable mention, Flyway All-Conference. Nate Kelly, second team Flyway All-Conference in wrestling. We have all of the boys coming back, Nate is, oh, Riley Banky, honorable mention, All-Conference. And everybody's coming back and that's what's really exciting. Nate is commissioned with the Army, correct? And he is, he is going to be in the armed forces. So congratulations to the wrestlers. On to girls' basketball, because I don't see anybody here from boys' basketball, and we'll get them there. One of the neat opportunities is to watch the girls play on a regular basis. And this year was a great year for the girls, you know, the numbers were low at the varsity and we had a junior varsity team that was very good. And as they combined together in the final, in the tournament series, it was just quite a dynamic team. And we have two returning basketball stars on our team that are going to be here for us next year. And I'll read all of the, all of the awards winners to it. Honorable mention, not present tonight, Sarah Logtman, second team Flyway Conference, Brooke Scott.
Stand up.
Stand up, Brooke. And we had Brienne Morris, honorable mention. Girls played well on the road in postseason play, defeating WLA, moving on, tough at Ousburg as, as always. But one thing I was really proud is the school coming together. We had a trip that took place down in Chicago for the, the science classes. And the kids had, had an opportunity to come back, the bus came back, dropped off a bunch of kids, almost all the kids, to Ousburg to meet the other kids that were coming on the fan bus. Mr. Mann took all the band equipment down so we could pack more kids in the fan bus and we got down there and I'll tell you, we, we owned.
We did.
We owned it until the fans felt uncomfortable, the Ousburg fans had to stand up and start cheering as well. It was exciting, it was very dynamic, you know, tooth and nail all the way and it was a great opportunity to see the girls playing and playing their hearts out. So looking forward to the future of girls' basketball and seeing a lot more present in, in the paper.
One thing too, with that, with that showing students from when we had Ousburg, that really broke off the cap of our expectations for school spirit and cheering. And it will not be tolerated anymore of sitting on their hands and we know that we need to help students learn how to do that. Mr. McDowell and myself will be spinning music. Ann, rumor has it that there very well could be a couple birds in Mexico, Orioles, that may give birth to a new mascot in the fall. Rumor has it, because of that exciting at Ousburg, word got down to Mexico and we may have a new Oriole mascot that could help lead the school spirit.
That's where they winter.
That's where they winter, Mexico. And people are going to have to research that, so keep your ears open, eyes open, for some excitement.
What happened to Stu?
Stu's around. Stu's fake though. This one's going to be real. So just keep your eyes open.
And just finishing up with, with boys' basketball, you know, in both Gary Keel and Chris Saberlich, you couldn't find two more dedicated coaches in being here on a regular basis, whether it be open gyms around the clock, going to boys' baseball games, going to the boys' football games, and, and the girls' activities, you know, they're all in, they're a hundred percent. And we had Mitch Baldwin, second team All-Conference in basketball, and we have these Colton Krupp honorable mention in basketball. And just one thing I want to make mention to, you know, we talked about the number we had. The Flyway Conference athletic directors got together and we revamped a little bit as far as All-Conference and awards, and it's based on how you place in the conference. So the people we get are the people that we put up for, for these awards. So getting a first team, getting a second team, you know, within where you're at, you know, so if you place first in the team, you're X amount of people that you can offer up to All-Conference awards and kind of keep it within the realm of being able to navigate through the All-Conference meetings with the people. So they did a fabulous job this year, very exciting the boys too, and it just was reminiscent. I was down at just a game with my daughter's basketball team for sixth grade and I'm watching the, the basketball game in state and we had NEW Lutheran, a team that we went right down to the wire with and they're playing in state. You know, so we're right there, you know, with that boys' team and everything that they do on a, on a regular basis, always fighting to, to do everything that they can do. And so it's been a great opportunity and looking forward to, one, spring sports for hopefully some warm weather, and, two, to, to see our, our new spring sports, some, some new coaches that are, that are present tonight, and to see some things happen, so I'm really excited for, and we got everybody going. We got baseball, we got softball.
Soccer.
We got soccer, we got track, rock and roll. We're going to be hosting regionals again. La Myra could not fulfill the contractual needs for the area, so they, they asked us to host regionals again and we were more than welcome to open up our facilities.
And Tony?
We have, we have Fondleac County everywhere.
Oh, nice.
We tried to put that out, but they, they like our facilities and coming back, so we get to play.
And we do have, just to kind of get a visual, if you haven't met, we have Coach Perswell and Whitey, that are the leaders of our baseball team, you guys stand up, just in case people haven't seen, those are our new baseball coaches, so welcome aboard. First time I've ever been to a practice where they already have their uniforms on. So it looked pretty cool out here, so good work, good work. So, once again, students, thank you very much for your dedication, hard work, and everybody but Nate, who's going to be serving us in the military, thank you very much for that. We're looking for a lot of leadership out of you, there's a lot of people are going to work hard over the summer to get better and better. So talking to more and more of your friends and even people that aren't friends but you like that are, that want to play, or even if you don't like them, that you want them to participate so you can get to know them. We need more numbers. So good work and we're looking forward to next year, great leadership. Thank you. All right, right now, I'm going to pause, just in case the students and families would want to leave and not stick around for the rest of the, the meeting, although you're more than welcome. Especially those who have Miss Maurer, who have to have their credit for the meeting, this could be a good one. Oh, also, just another thank you to, to Miss Banky and to Tom and Sherry and Kimberly Clark. If you go up in the wrestling room and now it can move, it smells a lot better, some ionizers that make it a lot more tolerable. It's like putting a filter.
What's up with that?
Oh, it's great, so that was wonderful. Thank you, guys.
You gotta look the part, Aaron. That's why we have the boys in their outfits.
You look good.
You look good, right?
I love it, I love it. Thank you, guys. They will, they do, but the players have pants on and the shirts, it's good. All right, next, budget update. What we're going to do, and I'll, with Maria, I'll have her, if you have any comments or any questions right now, we don't really have a budget report right now, we're just in the midst of making it, we're going to be coming in, I believe, April, to have a revised budget like we did last year, kind of, or will that be made?
Probably made.
Probably made. What we're going to be doing, and I think we should wait just a little bit until after the elections, to set a date for when, and I'm hoping it's going to be in late April, or not late April, it will be in May sometime, or early June, where we'll have a budget workshop, where we'll actually go through, there's like a game board and it kind of talks about primary, secondary, tertiary, funds, all those different things, and where money comes from. And kind of, you can look at how school finance is so much different than other things. And then also with that, Maria, hopefully, while working with Dave and myself, we're going to be looking at a long-term project or facilities management plan, and we'll be coming with that, I believe, probably in April or May, to present a group that we'd want to go with that will help to facilitate that process. So we can look at what our facilities are like, what our needs are going to be in two, three, four, five, 10 years. Also then, I think that, understanding that group, which we'll look at our long-term facility plans, along with our budget group, I think they're one in the same, because our facilities can't just be made based on wishing, they ask for resources, and depending on what the resources are available and how our financial outlook looks, I think it'd be beneficial for us to do what we've done in the past and be proactive and planning. So what I would, what I would suggest is that in April, one of the things that I will do is come and set a date for when we'll have that budget and finance meeting, and that can be in June, July. It, it isn't anything that's really time-bound, because a lot of what we're going to be doing, we had already talked about our two-year budget last year, we know next year, we're going to be running in a deficit that we're going to cut down, we're already lower in our deficit than what we planned, so we're, we're actually ahead of schedule, would you say, as far as where we are with our, our budget. Maria will present that when she goes with the revised budget, which is a new process that we're also doing every year. Last year, we came with revised budget, kind of, it's, it's a lot easier to take exactly what happens from the funding that we get from the state and from different entities and from the federal government, and then be able to look at a more accurate picture. But we're going to be moving into next year, looking at a, having our same staffing, for the most part, might be some moving and switching around at the high school, we're looking at doing a couple things with some of the staff, but we're looking at pretty similar to what we have going now, no real big project plans, if you will, for building, but give us an opportunity to really build and grow and look at what our needs are going to be in the future. So that's kind of where we're looking. One thing I will be bringing, I'll bring this up right now, because it's a budgetary issue, in a future board meeting in April, I will be bringing a recommendation for infusing $150,000 into our educator effectiveness, the, the salary compensation advancement plan that we had talked about last year. So, and that would not be base wages, that would be something that the board would put into to be considered merit pay, but it's not merit pay, it's, it's pay that we have already decided with the compensation committee in a plan, escape plan, educator salary compensation advancement plan that the board had passed last fall, that this would then fund that so that we can be ahead of the game. And that will, that has already been built in our budget, it was built in our two-year budget, that Maria will go over in April, kind of like just an overview of. So that will be coming up in April, and then in May, remember, we have our May board meeting, the 13th of May, which is a Monday, two weeks earlier, because of Memorial Day weekend, but also, that gives, what's that?
12th.
12th, thank you. 12th, Monday the 12th. That also gives us a perfect time to issue contracts, contracts by the new state law statute from last year, now cause that date to be May 15th. And that way, it'll fall perfectly into what we need to do and we'll be ahead of the game and not have to do retroactive things. And also, when we issue those contracts, the teachers, any teachers that we have not evaluated as effective, will be aware of that and they will not receive that compensation until they're evaluated as effective or get off the plan and approved. I'm working with the staff administrative team as we go through to continue to kind of wind up in the next month and a half, two months, our educator effectiveness plan. So, any questions on that? One, I don't know if this is a blessing or a curse, and Dave, I saw him smile yesterday, I heard about the story, he finally sold the truck, but we had ordered a truck, because our truck was falling apart in the salt, the plow, was it, what's that called? What kind of plow?
We have a V plow.
We have a V plow now. And we ordered it actually last November for the snow, to really help us with the snow well. Apparently, those are like diamonds and nobody, you can't get them, I mean, they're like gold, can't get them anywhere, so.
Plows or the truck?
Both, together. Yeah, with the dumb, all that stuff, so we ordered it and it was, it was going to come in.
Well, six week lead time, so we should have had it in the beginning of January.
Yep. So we finally got it. The good news is, is the person who's buying the other plow truck, I still think is on the line, we did have to replace reverse, which is good though, because now they can go backwards. So, but, so our new truck now has gotten one less winter under it, so that was, that was, that was kind of an interesting story as far as budgetary stuff goes, interesting. So, and one, did you get any complaints about snow removal this year?
I haven't.
I haven't either. Even Stone again, we'll keep them going, so. The people, even Stone and then Dave, along with Rick and the rest of our crew, they do a great job with snow removal, especially this year when it was so cold. Even when you threw salt down, that didn't do anything. So, they did a great job. All right, next, election preview, April 1st, that's a week from tomorrow. We have three official writing candidates, they're Benny Score, Mike Streeter, and Paul Stebbacher. That was, those are the people that after the deadline for bringing in signatures, nobody did, and we have two of the gentlemen here in the crowd, Mike Streeter and Benny Score, so thank you for throwing your name ahead and offering to serve, and then Paul Stebbacher is another person that lives in Writing Friendship, and she has also put her hat, her hat in the ring. So it'll be a write-in election, so there will be no names on the ballot, so as you go, that's an opportunity for you to write in, somebody that you feel would be appropriately serve the district, about the three people who signed in, they're intent to run, even though their names aren't on the ballot, if they are going to actively pursue the seat and say, vote for me, or put out signs or anything, they have to sign and fill out a GAV1 form, which they all did. And in that process, we're talking with Lisa Fryberg, this county clerk. One thing that we have in our, in our, in North Fondleac and the school district is because we have land in the Class II city, which is Target, Holiday Automotive, all that area, we have to get 100 signatures. And she, as I told her that, she thought, that's ridiculous. I mean, that's, I mean, for the size that we have, even the county, they reduced the county, I think, to 25 or 50 for the county. So what she's going to do is she's working with our, with Goodex and Jeremy Thienfeldt and hopefully Representative Schra from our district, to have a, and this won't be for this election, but it could be for the next elections, to reduce that number to 50, or kind of like a percentage, if you have X amount of people in your school district. So it's not just about the city that you're in, if you have that, to make it a little bit more reasonable, and I, I know that gets intimidating, that 100 signatures, I know all of you have gone through that, but that's, you know, in the middle of winter, it's a hard thing to do, especially if you don't know the people to go and get that done. So that's one thing that came up that she's looking at, proposing a bill to do that, and I, I said if there's anything we can do to help or anything, I know that, that would probably make it a little more palatable. Still, I don't think we can eliminate signatures, but make it more of a manageable thing. Any feedback on that?
That bill is aimed at the state level, right?
Correct. But we could call it the North Fondleac rule, we could say that if it passes, that we were the impetus to it, the catalyst.
Hopefully, there's enough other quirky areas like our situation that they, they take it seriously and think it's something they should change, not just, you know, involves North Fondleac, no big deal. But it makes sense, I mean, based on the number of people that are in our district, that's a lot, percentage wise, compared to other communities.
So I'll keep, uh.
Yeah, it does make sense, but actually was a, a nice way to get to, to talk to people and each person I got to sign, invited me in for a little while, sit down and tell me all their thoughts about the district and how things went, so I got a lot of feedback doing it, so, but, so I'd hate to see somebody not get that opportunity, but as well, it still was, seems like a little more than what you need to, to get on, but they say it adds some benefits too.
Because we never did that until five years ago. Remember when I, I got, did some calling stuff and figured, this is what we better need to do, and, you know, it shows that, it's a, it's a commitment thing, but at, at what level, and I agree with, with Miss Fryberg, we'll see if that can be, what, what can happen with that, so. So that's, so remember, election is April 1st, and that's going to be Philly John's seat, so. And then after that, we know the first April election, at that time, that's when we'll figure out all officers, delegates, all that stuff will be done at that first April meeting after the election. Next, policy update, I'm done with, with Richard Zimmern, Dr. Zimmern from Neola, met five times. Maria met with us periodically, at least for one day, and then I think every day I yelled in at you like five, six to 20 times. at you like five, six to 20 times. I also consulted with the administrative team, with the school nurse, and pretty much the mindset of everybody was, let's just make them, let's keep the flavor that we have, but there really isn't much you can do to policies, except when we start to get some things that maybe have a little more local flavor. What I did is I shared with all of you a document, and I did with you administrative team, just of kind of what I was going through, and you're going to see that we're switching away from letters, like the G series, the K series, we're switching to the zeros, which are the bylaws, and the 1000s, 2000s, 3000s, all the way up to the 9000s. What, what I suggest that we do is that on Monday, May 19th, what Richard's done right now, since we've got all of these policies done, he and I have gone through with other people that had interest and stakes in this, what we did is we got it all done, which ones did we adopt from them, which ones did we keep from ours. Some of ours, I recommended that we just go with what theirs are, they'll back them, it's the same thing, there might be a couple of words here and there. Some of ours, we were able just to take what we had and copy and paste it exactly right into what, into the number there. So I'll, when you go through and you kind of look through that list of my notes, you'll see there was some things that kind of, there's some questions that we'll go through. But what my recommendation is, is that I'm going to have a book for each one of you and the new board member, along with one for myself, for the administrative team to look at, and then another one they'll keep as official. Then what we'll do is go through it, read the book, all the different policies, which most of them are similar, and some of them are just our motto, some of them are terms of election information, the bullying policy, all these different things, and some stuff we didn't have in there with genetic testing and things that are, that we need to have, or we can't discriminate based on somebody's genetic history now, if you know that. So what I would say, what my recommendation is, is I get you these policy books when they get completed, which should be by mid-April. You have them for a month, or I get them to you by April, or April board meeting, you have for three, four weeks, go through it, mark it up. At that time, I'll have brushed up all of the different comments that I had. You can look at things, any things you have questions on or ideas. Then I say we have a special meeting on May 19th, which would be the week after, or the week before Memorial Day, but the week after our normal meeting, and we have that from 5:00 till the cows come home, we'll get some food in, and just go through the whole thing, talk about it. That can be our first reading if we want. And then what I do is I have a resolution that, that would say if we go through it, if we see that we want to make some changes, but that's our first reading, we could pass as a resolution. Then what we can do is come our June meeting, that can be the second reading, and then those, starting July 1st, or that June board meeting, the 4th Monday in June, those policies could be in effect, we could say July 1. The nice thing about if we would do that is that many of the policies that are in the, the new policy book, and in the old one, have, or have ties to our, our educator guide, and our hourly wage associate guide, that they kind of tie right in to exactly what those are all about. So it'd be really nice, kind of get that together, I can start referencing them in the guides that I bring forward to you in May, and then June for the educator guide and hourly associate guide, and then it could be pretty clean. If we see what my, if we see that as your reading needs, you're like, hold on a second, let's slow down a little bit, let's look at these more in depth, we can do that. But we have the majority of the first work done, now it's just about reviewing, don't like this word, change this a little bit, maybe end this. Do we need to have, we have a vision, do we need to have something else? And are we happy with what we've got? Just those types of things. So this then, once that is done, then the plan would be that they're passed, and then they go live. And once they go live, I'm working with Neola, and you can see the example that I put out about Ripon. But once we go live, it will be online, North Finalak Policies takes you to a portal, anybody in the whole community and the whole world could do it. Type in bullying, harassment, expulsion, elections. Let's say a board member retires or resigns, how's that feel? You type in any keywords, they're all right there. We'll no longer have to print anything, they'll all up to date and accurate. So that's going to be very nice. So the plan is, I get you the copies of these books, I'll get you a kind of review of what we went through, kind of some of the questions, like look at this one, somehow, some sections are like already new because we didn't have any of it. And then you look at that, we get together May 19th if that would work, we go through the policies, it could be long, it could be short, I mean, if everybody goes through them, we're like, hey, there's just certain ones we want to pull out, we can do that. And then that's our first time through it, and then we do our second time in our June regular meeting, and we're good to go.
Do you think, I know we've got five till whenever, but I remember the last time we met as a policy committee, we were, two hours, we didn't accomplish it. You mean, should we set up more meetings so it's not so rushed, do you think?
Well, here's what I'm going to do. I will get you the policy books, and what we were doing as a policy group, we were trying to convert the letters to the numbers, and then we were trying to look at what the W A S B had given us, and to see is, is this comparable to what we have? What should we do? How should we go? There was, there was more open. What Neola did is say, hey, here's what we got, this is what we'll back, here are templates, here's what you got. Let's put them together. So when you get this book, it's going to look done. So you'll get this book, and it will look finished. The question is, is our, is everything in there the way you like it? Now, understanding the board and how we've worked in the past, and from what your, what your request of me, and when you said, Aaron, you work with Richard, work with administrative team, teachers, nurse, whoever the party's involved, and then come to us, and you guys kind of worked through that. I'm thinking and understanding your mindset and being able to work with you guys for the past five years, plus that as a principal, there isn't a whole bunch of controversy in there. And I think what we were trying to do is we were trying to herd cats. This is going to be more about just kind of brushing it out, looking at some things, and you'll have plenty of time beforehand to look at the whole thing. And if at that time, I think you're 100% right, as you're going through it, and you're saying, hey, this seems a little bit more, because most of them are benign, and the majority of the policies you've been through, or if you haven't been through them, you're like, well, we always did this anyways, why wasn't it a policy? We just didn't have it. Probably the more critical part of this about how things go isn't something that you guys will be doing per se, it'll be the process about administrative rules. A lot of the policies as they are now written, for instance, our student behavior, there's a lot of gray, there's a lot of, okay, the district administrator, you give the authority to the district administrator to then enforce this, just like the state of Wisconsin says, here's our statute, you enforce how to do it. You have base wage negotiation, we're not telling you what that is, okay, this other group, you make the rules for. So many of the policies, just as has been in the past, have been policies, governance, guiding, big ideas, which will then correlate to, I think, very easily being able for us to articulate what our administrative guidance are for. So, but I think as we go forward, if we do see that, we're way ahead of the game already, and so, I mean, this was going to be a two-year, two-year time, and we started, I started with Richard in January. So we're doing pretty well, and if we need to slow down a little bit, that's okay. So should we put that down there, May 19? Okay. All right, next, new section, the future board items. In April, you will be hearing from Jill Lewinsky, Todd Hayes, Samantha, myself, maybe some other staff, maybe some students, and you'll be hearing about our, about our, kind of our entrepreneurial academy idea, Project Lead the Way is part of that, and Mike's involved with that. So the whole idea of kind of switching and looking at that rigor and relevance of education for our kids, kind of at the crux of it is Jill Lewinsky and her idea of a coffee shop, a cafe, if you will, an old sewing room. So you'll be presenting information and ideas about that, and how that is going to be looked, how they're, how we're moving forward, and she's really doing a great job. I think she's been a blessing to our district about really getting things rocking and rolling, and I think really rejuvenating that area. And she is going to be asking for one of two things. I'm, I'm meeting with some private companies to look at some partnerships, of maybe some ability for them to do some building for us, to get us some things pretty inexpensive to, with this whole employability, entrepreneurialship, kind of cafe store, which then has a lot of learning implications to it also, not just from the store itself, but also the financial part, the work skills, the food preparation, whole bunch of things. Also, we look at our home maintenance opportunities to make sure that we keep all the parts running and everything going. So it's just the first part of many, and also about Liz Forbes and her students, and Jan Wege and her students, so it's a pretty big thing. But you'll hear more about that in April, and Jill and Todd will be doing a little presentation also, and Samantha, to answer some questions. So we'll look at, I'm hoping that maybe we'll be able to find the resources to do this. Otherwise, what Jill's idea and what she's requested is, would the board be willing to loan this, loan us some money for us to do some, buy some products, display things, rejuvenate that area, kind of, so it's, you can, the big thing is water, sinks, electricity, kind of some remodeling that needs to be done to meet Coach, she's been working with the county, Finalak County Health Department, I'm looking at Coach, things that would have to be done. So by April, we'll be able to know ideas that we have, we're working with Tom Nicol, John Architect, who's going to have the plans drawn, so we can have a better idea of cost. So in April, just be ready to hear information about this idea and this concept, and then one of two things, either I'll go with you in a closed session and talk about the group I've been meeting with, and tell you a little bit about what it is, what they want to do, and kind of get your feedback, and come to open, and reveal who that is. Or if that doesn't work, or it could be a combination where then maybe we could look at possibly loaning the money to Jill, to that, and Maria, we could work on that, so that we could get this going in that cafe from what it makes, its profits would pay that back over a specific time. So heads up, really exciting stuff. If you go to, I'll send you a link to the entrepreneurial page that I've started, kind of to tie all this together from Project Lead the Way to this cafe idea to many different things. That Lisa Electric, you saw the conduit tubing, that was for high-mileage car. Tom is working on building a high-mileage car, starting to look at some things also that Mike will be doing with Project Lead the Way, and also in Tech Ed. So that's something, heads up.
Just one thing, I think I mentioned to you in Formuline once too, that you're looking at getting legal advice about the profit, nonprofit status thing. I had just some experience years ago where, where it wasn't proper, and they had to run it through a foundation in order for the district to make a profit selling a product, that kind of thing. So, so I would just ask that, at the beginning too, you make sure that we are all okay there. Also, there's, in the work comp law, there's things about student employees and student working placements and all that, which you're probably familiar with that anyway, but.
Yep, excellent, thank you.
Looking at all that stuff.
We'll definitely make sure this, and that's part of the whole learning process. As these students go through to look at, it's just like you get a job, it's the background of what goes on in order to make this all happen. So by all means, those are, this is by, this is a, it seems like something that, yeah, let's go do it, but there's a lot of different layers to it. But we just want to be proactive, you know, start in a doable way and just start to grow. Let's, oh, just, and then also, big thing coming up is solo ensemble. State's coming up, right?
Mm-hmm.
When is that?
26.
April 26th, so good luck with that. Is our board meeting in April before or after that, 26? I think it's before that. So we might have that, but look forward to, we're going to recognize and honor the solo ensembles, especially the state qualifiers, there's quite a few, isn't there?
Um, I think, yes.
Okay, good, good. And then what we'll do is we'll see if we can get a little performance going, too. Also, big news, Anthony Rasmussen emailed me this, Andrea Meadows, who's a freshman, her and some other people had tried out for the state honors course, which is a big deal. There's only, there's like, I don't know, 60? No, there's not that many, but it's a big deal. And they perform a couple of times in the summer, and then they perform at the music convention down in Madison, the Overture Center, and she made it. So she, I don't know the last time we had somebody from North Finalak on the honors course, the Wisconsin State honors course, but she did. So that's exciting. And then Leanne Babers is actually one of the, one of the lead parts, I believe, in the St. Mary Springs musical, coming up in two weeks. Oh, sorry, the North Finalak Horseman High School, St. Mary Springs musical, which is coming up in a couple of weeks.
There's actually three students in the, in the cast. Leanne has a lead, and then there's two supporting.
Yep. So and Crystal Lewis has been great to work with, and I know that Anthony's already looking at, what, the weekend before deer hunting next year, looking at a musical that we're going to put on. And then another heads up, Todd Whitaker is talking about starting a drama and getting some plays going in the middle school also. So it'll be a hotbed for the arts coming up, so. And I talked about contracts in May, we did mention a little bit about keep your ears open. There's going to be a lot of excitement about an Oriole, and the mascot type of thing, and maybe some contests and some riding, so be excited. I'm a little nervous. I don't know what we're going to do when these birds fly up from Mexico and what we're going to do, but we'll figure it out. All right, any, that's all I have. Anything that you guys would like to see, future board items, or anything that's, all right, administrators provided the reports. You'll also notice what Samantha's doing now, is she's doing it online. I put the link on there. I know that also other administrators are using that smores on a weekly basis too, so you guys can get the links for that too. So, but any questions you have on administrative reports?
Yeah, well, first of all, I went, Melanie, in your report, and Sam too, I guess I came to with the change over to the block schedule, I was happy to see that you mentioned in the upcoming staff development, having training in how to teach in the block or whatever. And being part of the research group that did it, the last time we had tried it, you know, there's, there's a lot of differences, as you obviously all, all know, and I'm sure the staff members know, but just anything we can do to help them get off the ground. And, well, I guess Adam will be involved in that too, sorry about that. It's going to be really helpful, I think. Some taught in it already, and others, I know, we have young teachers that may not have, you know, on it. So, anyway, that was one thing. And then the other, Deb isn't here, but in her report, she mentions the biometric screening, something. One thing that kind of caught my eye was the health counselor thing, and I just want to know if that's going to be a required part of that, or is that something that you can avail yourself to if you so choose to talk to the health counselor from the insurance company, the staff members and their family members, if you know that?
It's all part of the, it's all available. I mean, I, we haven't really talked about whether that's going to be a requirement or not. The health risk assessment, so filling out the numbers and getting natural screening, those two things would be required to stay on premium level one.
Sure, okay. Yeah, that's fine, that's all similar to what we did in the past. The past program with the other insurance carrier, somebody contacted the staff member, I believe, and if you wanted to, you could discuss with them. And I think a lot of people prefer talking maybe to their doctor, not to somebody on the phone, or however it might be. So I would like to just see that be an optional part of the program.
And he did say, in some of the, the information I discussed, that he had to add, I think it was add 10 minutes to your time if you chose to meet with that.
Oh, okay.
Counselor, so I'm.
So it may be optional right from the start.
One thing also at W P S, we've been working with them, there was some glitches, to say the least, in the transition, but I think we're working through that right now. I want to thank Maria and Bonnie for the great job that they did on the backside, that whenever there was an issue or a problem, really holding W P S's feet to the fire, making sure that things got done. The biometric screen last year, we were not happy whatsoever with how it went and how it was run. This year, it's going to be a kind of a different format, it's going to be in the morning on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in Bessie L., and it's going to have the biators. It's going to be like if you go in to give blood, it's going to be a different atmosphere where we're going to make sure that privacy is taken care of. You should be getting the letter, I think you, or not you, but the staff will get letters explaining what it is. Also, we know that it's a limited three-time thing. We're also, we're not putting this out yet, but we're going to, we have some availability for staff members, spouses outside that can't, that are legitimate, that we can work with too, to make sure that nobody's forced to go to the premium level two. Everybody has a very clear way and option to just minimal sacrifice, get the staff premium level one. And as I've said to the staff, if I've said to our Congress, any politicians or leaders that I hear, one of the things I know in this district we're proud of is keeping our premium levels the lowest we possibly can, because our staff is dedicated to usage and wellness. Biometric screening and knowing about your health is one of the critical parts of that. So the staff, after the first year, I remember, we had some really big discussions about that, but pretty much now it's like, hey, all right, it's almost like a competition, hoping that their, their numbers get lower. And next year, we may, you might have heard of Fitbits, kind of Fitbits, or there's new technology that people can wear that can get feedback on things. This biometric screening is like the third Friday count. You know, you get one shot, here's what your, your numbers are, and then you come back the next year, get it again unless you go to the doctor. What we're looking for is maybe giving the options to some people to maybe utilize some of these Fitbits or some of this other technology, so that their, their, some of their biometrics can be measured on a more daily basis to really give some immediate feedback. All of that will impact health in a positive way, which will impact insurance usage or lack thereof, and attendance at school, and productivity at school, plus being good role models. So thank you very much for your, for your leadership in healthcare. And our district is very unique in the way we look at things. We don't look at health. We don't look at healthcare as something that we utilize to balance budgets, we look at it as something that we utilize to attract high-quality personnel, and also that we utilize to help people to have high-quality lives. So thank you very much for your leadership.
Before we move on, I have a question for Samantha. In the high school report, I read that there is a comment about the Oriole Insight Journalism staff, they'll be launching a new website, which I'm presuming is giving students an opportunity to make some journalism endeavors and publish something, and as, as you are probably all painfully aware, a neighboring school district is rather in hot water right now for...
I think they were discussing that tonight, actually.
Yes, so I would, I would just hope that whatever we do, that some thought is given to, you know, some firm guidance as to what's appropriate, what's not, and how, and we'd be sensitive about how that's communicated, because it seems to have gotten, like, that's all in the media.
I can tell you tomorrow, I go on the radio with Wade Bates, and I am going to talk specifically about the process that Ms. Crabbe, Samantha Freeman, and myself have already developed. Do you want to share it?
Sure, and we've actually had this process before Katie Crabbe, when Brian Chaguniski was the journalism teacher, and it just kind of transitioned with Katie. You know, we, we are very different than our neighboring districts, but, you know, we trust our educators, we have worked with Katie before that, Brian, we trust that they're going through and talking to students about what they're putting out there, but more importantly, you know, what we've really just been involved in administratively is, because we have faith in them as far as what they're going through, when they have shared the newspaper always with me and the website and that, it's been about, you know, is there anything illegal as far as name use and aesthetics? You know, what's, what's going on there? Are we spelling things correctly? If we are, like tonight, you know, thanking our athletes for being award winners, let's spell their names right, let's make sure if they got honorable mention, you know, that we're indicating that, so we've had the same process for years, that, like you said, whether it's been Katie or Brian, or before that, that they go through the content and work with students on, you know, what's out there. Are there going to be things that may be, you know, on the edge? Sure, but again, if it's appropriate, that they've gone through and done their research and putting information out there, you know, that's, that's what we call our faith in our educators.
One of the things, as Katie had brought that up, and I've talked to Samantha, it's not a lot shocking, it's about good reporting, it's about talking about difficult issues, it's about bringing up information that, that isn't about, that's age-appropriate, because we're still looking at, and within the context of how it's being shared, and that's really what it's all about, it's not about anything about censorship, about what I like, or I don't like, or Samantha likes, or she doesn't like, or what Katie likes, or what Katie doesn't like, it's, is it accurate? Is it appropriate? And is it written in a way that is for this, for this age level, for this school, that it's, it's quality? And that doesn't mean it's gonna be desirable and liked by everybody, but that's what's most important. So if there ever is a disagreement, like before anything gets published, Katie gives it to Samantha, Samantha looks at it, if there's ever a disagreement with Samantha and Katie that's of substantial nature, then I'll get involved and I'll talk with them, and we'll mediate and figure something out, and throughout that, throughout that whole process, if there's ever a student, if it's about a student's piece that the student wrote, that student will have a voice, if there's ever a question about not allowing that piece to be written, or suggesting that there should be some changes in it, because that's, that's, you know, it's one of the, probably one of the most disheartening things, is if you would allow somebody to do something, and then when they do it, say, no, you can't. But I think it's from the leadership from the beginning, it's Oriole way, being ready, respectful, and safe. All stories, if they're about assault, bullying, I mean, first thing came out is Katie sent out this thing that says, so what do you want some stories to be? Oh, I filled in two right away. Number one, I'd love a story about really bullying. What's really going on with bullying? Are people just being mean to other people? Do parents say that kids are being bullied when they're not being bullied, just because they don't like what's happening? Is there a lot of bullying on that we don't know about? You know, what's really happening? Because we hear these things, and I can tell you how much effort is put in by the administrators and the counselors and teachers and about bullying. Nothing, not one thing, that if we ever hear about bullying, even if we don't think it's, are we gonna pan out, we always look at it. So I would love to have a piece written about the truth, about harassment and bullying, and then if something comes out that we don't know about, then darn it, cool, we can get after it. So, but I'm really excited about this, and I think the process will yield itself, and I, and I do hope, I do hope students really take this seriously and write about things that are worthwhile, that get people to think, that are appropriate, because that's what journalism is all about.
Any emails?
I'm ready.
Excellent. Moving on to new business. Discuss and consider grading scale change for the 2014-2015 school year.
We've talked about this probably for the past year, I think, I think there's been things about this for a while, we've already gone through the history of rigor, that it was needed to differentiate students at different levels, and we also looked at the whole idea of, consistent with other districts, scholarships and transfers and college admissions, you can see that there, pretty much what this grade scale is, it's a ten-point scale. You can see that for an A+ or a D-, there is no differentiation in points per se. One of the neatest emails I got on Friday, put this out there, say, hey, one last thing, anybody got feedback? Pretty much three people out of all our educators. I emailed it to the high school and middle school, because elementary goes with standards-based grading, and that's probably where we're gonna be heading up, you know, in the future. But one of the, we did, we had A, A-, B+, all the way down, and one of the teachers said, you know what, can't we have A+? It doesn't need to have more grade points, but it's a prestige thing, and it's kids that they want the A+ because they know they earned the A+. And isn't that the neatest thing? That they're not doing it for a point, but they're doing it because they want to have that symbol? It's like being an educator that's, you know, we have educators that are, that are trying to be distinctive, that are trying to be upper rationalize, and why are you doing that? For more money, or that you can really have pride? So you'll see that there's no grade differentiation, A+ and A, or D-, or D, and there was a comment about, you know, D- could really maybe send a different message, that, yeah, you might have passed, but it was just bad skin your teeth. We all know that grading is all based on, it's a piece of data point that somehow correlates to what kids do. Sometimes teachers might utilize how many right they got, or rubrics that they utilize, but the bottom line is, an A, I believe in this scale will still be an A, that was in the last scale, it's just gonna be a different percentage number. So as you can see in the orange, that is the proposed grade point in grading scale. One of the things that was brought up is that at the top, there might not be enough differentiation for, if you're looking at who's the top, who gets that scholarship. Well, in our policies that you'll read, we actually have a policy for that scholarship. The number one thing is grade point average all the way down to the thousands, if you will, if it's still tied, then it goes to the ACT composite score, if it's still tied after that, it goes to the highest of the next, of the four individual scores of the ACT, and then the next, and the next, so we have that already. So Samantha or Adam, any feedback from your staff, or from you guys?
I think, just like you mentioned, that we've had this conversation for a few years, that, you know, a couple of scholarships, it just is, it is what it is, that we can't change your scholarship, and so sometimes our students do get slighted. The bigger issue here again is, is the competencies, and that's what we need to hopefully move towards in the next couple of years, to, to get away from grading, whether it's a ninety or ninety-three, or eighty, or whatever the scale is, it's really about if the students are meeting the competencies.
And again, our staff, the middle school, would, would love this change, and just think it would be more appropriate for our students, and just allow for, like, again, that student's working hard to get an appropriate grade that matches up with other schools and districts and areas.
Any questions from the board? Seeing that I'll make the motion to approve the proposed ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty grading scale.
How so?
Second question, Mr. Hahn. Any further discussion? Seeing that we're...
Duffy?
Yes.
Hahn, yes. Duna?
Yes.
Chizik?
Yes.
And Lott?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is discuss and consider changing middle school and high school schedules, modify block schedules for the 2014-2015 school year.
This is something that a lot of research and work has gone into also, I applaud Samantha for her efforts for the past year and a half, and Adam for his efforts coming in, well, actually probably two years for Samantha, and then Adam's efforts coming in since last July, looking at how we can utilize the technology of time better, to give students better opportunities within school. What the modified block really does, and I'll let Samantha and Adam talk about it, we've shared quite a bit, is it's not a block per se every day, it's three days of the normal schedule, one day you have half your classes, the other day you have the other half, and on that, those two block days, you also have forty-five minutes a day to do more remediation, helping students out where they need it, where you have an opportunity to do some maybe interests that students have, opportunities for studying, for maybe participating in other opportunities that will help them with college, or to get them in their interest, be it robotics, be it music, whatever. Another neat thing is, is that there'll be an opportunity for people to actually do some clubs and things within the day possibly, that normally they'd never be able to participate in, because clubs would be handled outside of the day, and if you're working, or we want our kids to also participate in the arts and in athletics, you know, it's like with educators or anybody else, if it's that important, we should make time in the day. And the way that it looks is it went to track really from instructional time, it might take a little bit, a few minutes here and there, but I think, Steve, you had a really good point, in seeing what Melanie, Samantha, and Adam are planning for, how to, how can we utilize this and do it better? And you know what, we'll use it for a year, we'll see. I have a prediction that all the naysayers, or people who have anxieties about this, are gonna love it, because it's the best of both worlds, and I think it can, I think what it will also do is in time, will give students an opportunity to do something during the day that they really want to, not just things they feel they have to, which even if you're going on the college track, you don't have a whole bunch of options in the day, do you? You're pretty much crapping it out, you know, and so this, I think, will be a neat thing. So Samantha, Adam?
Sure, well, just to add what you were sharing, we are starting to build our master schedule, which may be the reason Heidi and I started to get headaches, but it's tough. We essentially build our master schedule around our GT students, we have to. You know, whether it is Spanish four or five, and advanced bio, advanced chem, you get on the list, you know, really, there are a small group of kids that are in everything possible advanced, we build that around, and so their day is really full. This modified block schedule, like Aaron was saying, three days a week, same schedule, two days a week, Wednesday and Thursday, we will have block days, so the classes will be ninety minutes, but then within that day, we have an intervention enrichment, who'd have come up with a good name, orial name, for it, there are forty-five minutes those two days per week that are gonna have opportunities. So our discussions for our GT kids have been, you know, the kids that, that are able to be involved in robotics, et cetera, that might be an option for them. Jill had a great conversation with me a couple of times so far, she also has ideation, but conversations about, hey, if I have kids who can't or don't take a Pro Start or Boots class, but are wishing, well, I have some sort of opportunity, I'm really gonna get in and work with them on employability skills, on some of the soft skills that were required to do for the ECT work keys, great. She's also talked to me about incorporating, again, our team of people with our business entrepreneurship model, as some of, again, the ECT work keys that they can use those two days. Intervention time, when we have students who are struggling, and to be honest, it's somewhat unfair just to say, well, sorry, you need to stay after school every day, and you need to work with that teacher. That's hard, you know, for those kids, like, really? Okay, but I'm, I'm not doing well in English and math, what do I do? So to have an intervention time built in at least, you know, two times a week, just can provide smaller groups, and then that's the important part here, is that our interventions would be smaller groups, so that a teacher can do some definite reteaching, some small group instruction with these students to, you know, hopefully really help them not only regain some confidence in that area, but skill. And the hope is, again, that we would, you know, monitor it after a quarter, and kind of see where those students are, and to see what their needs are. Are we gonna have a couple of kids who are gonna say, wow, I just, oh geez, I really don't have study hall at all in my day, and can I use that, that forty-five minutes both days, can I be the, the person who's in a study hall getting stuff done? That, that's a possibility, yes. But we're really just looking forward to providing opportunities for all our students, whether it be, you know, the GT, whether it be just different options for students in enrichment, or whether it be that intervention time for students who are really needing more of that small group, closer to one-on-one, reteaching instruction as possible. The rest of it, though, with the modified block, again, you know, Steve, having had staff members who either taught it here or in other schools, there is a research that shows that the block schedule, five days a week, increases student achievement. However, modified block does decrease behavior problems, or block, excuse me, you know, because of the passing time, et cetera. The schools that have gone to modified block have done it again to have the best of both worlds, that you have two days a week where if you're doing an extensive lab for a class that you can complete, and not you're rushing to go, sorry, two bad kids, we've got five minutes, you've gotta clean up your lab, go through it, if you didn't get it done, do the, do the figuring out of the lab sheets on your own. FIAE, you know, has many times said, you know, email, sent emails out to staff, sorry, our FIAE class is late, you know, trying to get a game of bowling, trying to get archery, trying to get snowshoeing in, you name it. Two days a week, it just provides all staff those opportunities, whether it be, you know, more in-depth discussions and communications to some of the labs, to some of the activities, so I really feel in our research with other schools, and then with our staff members, again, it's going to provide our students with the best of both worlds.
And then for us, the middle school, you know, obviously with our shared staff, we know that, you know, if there's something that we can do to support the high school or not look to do that, and we see some, some positives as well with this new schedule. You know, I know the schedule that's in the packet there, ours will be a little bit different just with the nesting hour that we currently have, we still like that time, so we want to incorporate that in our schedule. You know, we're gonna add into our block days a universal reading and writing time, so giving students an hour more of literacy every single day, and that's for all our students, and we'll kind of differentiate within those groups. You know, some of the positives to that block time, you know, just like Samantha said, looking at just more quality instruction time, instead of having to, you know, to pack up two times, say, you're just packing up and, and getting things started one time, instead of, actually, excuse me, and then having just extended time for those projects like Samantha mentioned as well, so, you know, there's some definite positives to the, the block and what we can do in there, and I think too, it's, you know, we have some, some questions to figure out, you know, I talked to staff at the last meeting about, you know, having, like, if we have a study hall that's in a block, in a ninety-minute study hall, we've gotta figure out, what are we okay with happening in that ninety-minute study hall? What do we think should not happen in that ninety-minute study hall? So there's some pieces to figure out, you know, even with our team time, we have a ninety-minute team time block, okay, how is that gonna be utilized? Do we need ninety minutes for those teams to talk and meet, or is that gonna be, maybe like a team planning day, more than a, you know, half-team time, half-planning day, so we'll have to kind of sort through some of those pieces, and, you know, I'm, I'm excited, I think like anything we do, we're gonna make adjustments and make changes as we, as we go with this next year, and tweak it and do what's best for our kids, so.
One, I think I've asked this before, I think, put a clarification on it. So at the intervention enhancement time, if a kid is struggling in math, they're gonna go to their math teacher, and that's where they're gonna spend that time, is that...
What, what will happen this summer is there will essentially be a draft, at least for the high school, because we're gonna take a look at, you know, how students, what their grades were, what their test scores are, and really who needs that intervention time for it. So they would be set into an intervention time for a quarter, and have the ability to kind of work themselves out of that, again, with, you know, not only monitoring of grades, but more of a pre-test, post-test, we may use the SCARIS program to help us in trying to regain skill. The students who go into the enrichment time will use more of a Google Doc format, so that they will be able to sign up weekly, you know, so one week they may choose to do chess for two days in chess club, so to speak, the next day, next week, excuse me, they may choose to sign up for robotics, so they'll have a little more flexibility. We wanna make sure that it's not, you know, one week a student's signing up for math, next week, English, we just don't feel like that that's a long enough time intervention, and talking to other schools, that was a recommendation as well, that to keep...
Well, they're in, they're in it for that semester.
To keep it for a quarter, and then give them the opportunity, which one school did, to earn their way out, you know. and talking to other schools. That was a recommendation as well, that to keep-
Well, they're in, they're in it for that semester.
To keep it for a quarter and then give them the opportunity, which one school did, to earn their way out, you know? So that's what our goal is gonna be is this summer to essentially have a draft of, you know, what's the ratio to keep that student group small for intervention and be able to get the reteaching. You know, if we had thirty students who came into math, it's not gonna work.
I think the other key thing to mention too with both of our schedules will be that, just to step back again, that intervention time or that extra reading and writing time is in addition to what's currently going on. So it's not taking away from like, we're pulling a kid out of con skills to give them reading support. No, we're, in addition to con skills, we'll get extra. So I think that's huge and that's like an elementary model as far as that power-up time. That's in addition to what every student gets, they're getting extra. So I think that, again, that's a positive thing for students.
Okay, Sam, I know I asked this last time, and there are students that struggle, you can answer the question that they're in for a quarter, but the kids that are struggling maybe for maybe a section of math and just need that help, that's not gonna alleviate them having to go in after school.
No, and there may be some different services though, again, trying to, you know, look at all the tweaks for this, that, you know, the resource model, for example, for our special education students is still going to be there, you know, so that they may not have that specific intervention. Special is gonna work with us to help guide what will be the best fit for students who have an IEP for those two days. But certainly, again, we're gonna have teachers who are offering enrichment that, you know, maybe it is, maybe Jeff Strax is doing something with Cap Cal II and, you know, has a couple of students and there's one student who's like, I really need to see Mr. Strax. Absolutely, we'll try to, you know, work that in and see if we can make that fit. And yes, like Adam said, it's still in addition to that our hope with the master schedule next year is that we're gonna have much more common planning time. We also, as Mr. Sadab said, what we're trying to do is the high school, teachers right now currently teach six classes. So they don't have a duty. Many of the other schools that we looked at teach five and they have a duty. Now, their duty could be study hall, mentoring, monitoring, et cetera. What makes it difficult for the high school staff is teaching six. There are no opportunities really for most of them to have a study hall where then that example would work really well. So what I'm trying to do and working with Mr. Sadab is for this coming school year, if, and there are a few departments that it's working out, numbers wise, where they could only teach five. And so I've asked him, please allow them to just teach five and then they will have a duty of a math resource or the monitoring, you know, ten students that are a great area for us to provide some extra support.
Really the skies are mine, and I think Adam and Samantha both said, this will be our first time. There's other people out there that are on the tip of the spear on this. And this is the first time, and I'm sure that as we go on, it'll get better and better and better. As the Wright brothers say, or used to do, is when they went to fly the plane, they always took extra parts and tools because they knew they'd crash. So, you know, going into it, we know that we have to continually get better and adjust. But this, I think, that whole technology of time is something that gets forgotten sometimes. Yeah, we get computers, yes, we get other pieces of technology, but how we utilize time and this whole concept, I'm really excited to see how this can be used to really accentuate what's most important during that school day.
Any other questions?
I guess just to say this, both of these items, the last one and this one are very positive steps and I, you know, I'm very happy that you've done all the work that's been involved in it, I think. Like, you used to work at best of both worlds with the schedule and I think that's true. Even though we learned all the positives about the block schedule last time, there were things that didn't work right with it, so the hybrid really makes sense.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll make the motion to change the middle school and high school's schedule to modify block schedule for the 2014-2015 school year.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Chisholm. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Duffy?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Wodowski?
Yes.
Hock, yes.
Yes.
Orson Carey?
Next item on the agenda is discuss and consider resignation of Jenny Stahl, horseman at high school, RST volleyball coach.
I'll just turn that over to Mike if you have a comment on Jenny. She's one of very valuable employees. She stepped up huge last year and I just think Jenny was our freshman coach and upon the resignation of Ashley Kreider, it kind of left a spot where we were looking for somebody. And, you know, volleyball is a skilled coaching position, just very similar to, you know, a hockey coach or a wrestling coach. And, you know, you have to be specific to that skill set to be able to understand the game and how it plays, you know, with the addition of a libero in there and that. And Jenny stepped up for the team to take on the girls this year and with doing basketball as well. I think it was just a little bit more than she thought that she was capable of handling, although she's very capable of the position. And so just in her best interest, she decided to resign the position. We are currently is the only coach, not the one that we are looking for at this time. I interviewed one person for the position, but Jenny did apply to that.
Just have one question, a little confused, but she is gonna stand as a JV coach?
No, for basketball, Michael.
Oh, okay.
She's gonna stand, Linda Wasidell is a JV, I've heard.
Linda Wasidell is the JV coach, the freshman coach is Jenny Harvey, and we're just right now searching for diversity.
She'll be the JV basketball position.
Any other questions? I'll make the motion. Motion by Mr. Pila?
One second.
Second by Mr. Hock.
Okay. Pila?
Yes.
Hock, yes. Chisholm?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
And Wodowski?
Yes.
Orson Carey?
Next item on the agenda is discuss and consider SEL seventh grade assistant volleyball coach, contracts to Amanda Schneider and Mary Lumber.
April, sorry.
It's April?
It's April. Mary's in college, she gets an actual.
I was wondering why she's gonna be old. I'm thinking, she said college, wow, that's great, so yeah, but it's April, okay, April.
A unique situation here. We were, once again, probably Kayla Dieter took over the seventh grade girls' basketball in January here, February? And our seventh grade girls' basketball's up to thirty, almost thirty girls.
Volleyball.
Volleyball, sorry. Volleyball. Up to thirty girls and Kayla took over the position, got some support also from her father and also Jenny helped a little bit, but she had two girls that really stepped up, two seniors that helped out. And what this is, is just offering a nominal contract for all the work that they have done for a hundred dollars each.
Good question. Does it have to be a contract? And, you know, are they eighteen? And also they, we can't legally contract anyway with somebody that they're under the age of eighteen?
I don't know about legally.
I was just wondering if it's only a hundred dollars and they're just helping out, if you could just give them a stipend or something. I guess to me, it doesn't matter either way. They deserve the, you know, what you wanna do for them, but.
Well, if you're all right with that, then we'll just do that.
That's just me. I don't know if anybody else would agree.
You can change the wording to compensate them.
Or we just don't even have to put it on there and I'll just take that as guidance and be good.
Senior athletic budget, if Mike has that available?
Yeah, I mean, one of the moments too is, and the girls did a lot more than just help out as well.
Right.
There's a couple of positions. When Kayla took the position, she knew she wasn't gonna be able, you know, to make it. And so what Jim Dieter did as an adult there, the other, the girls coached, you know, two games as well to make sure that this was all gonna work in order for somebody to step up and do it. Kayla did that and then the two girls agreed to help out.
I don't think we're gonna make, I don't think we need to use that motion here. It's just a.
I appreciate that.
Just a discussion. I mean, yeah, that you're doing that and we appreciate that and extend our, thanks to the ladies for helping out.
They're not just on that.
Yeah. All right, moving on. Discuss and consider offering contract to Anthony Rasmussen as the horseman, high school football coach.
Now, he is older and this is exciting. Zach says, you know, I can't believe this.
Anthony Rasmussen is becoming an invaluable asset to the school district. When I first, we first saw the choir play in the beginning of the year and sing, and just the way Anthony was able to go up with poise and speak to the audience was just phenomenal. He does a very nice job. He's well polished. He is a huge asset in the department and to the school district as a whole. One of those people that I guess you would consider to be all in because not only did we do solo ensemble, we also had the choir here as well. He coached basketball, giving up his master's license as an officiating already at that young age and because he didn't officiate this year. And he has agreed to take on the freshman position. Now, the freshman position, it's a restructuring because Adam McKee is gonna be more valuable to the middle school program because of his draw to the middle school kids, being a middle school teacher here. And so Anthony's gonna fill the position on the staff as the freshman coach, which we have the frosh soft varsity prep team. And Mr. McHewitt will be the middle school coach.
And all the compensation levels will be decided later when Zach gets his group together and then as a head coach he'll figure that out, but this will kind of ink Anthony in. So we don't know if he plays high school football, but we know that he knows how to get along with kids and he can learn and Zach loves that. So Zach says he can teach him the right way to do stuff.
There's not a program, we do, we don't hear his name mentioned.
And that sounds.
I bet he has family at the golf outing, phenomenal people. And it's great seeing him pop up everywhere.
Good hire.
Very nice.
All right. I will make that motion to offer contract to Anthony Rasmussen as the horseman, high school football coach.
One second.
He's second by Mr. Pila. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Duffy?
Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Wodowski?
Yes.
And Hock, yes. Orson Carey?
Next item on the agenda is discuss and consider resignations of educators.
Two ladies here, both early learning center special education teachers. Mary Kaderisik, who's been with us for, I believe, four years, three or four years, and she's done a great job, but she has some personal things that she needs to take care of. She's currently at ninety percent. So depending on the person that we get, I know that we need a lot of help. We have more and more need with early childhood coming in. So that position right now, we have posted a hundred percent, but we'll see where that all falls in. Jessica Spooty, unbelievable asset. She came in last year and was at Laconia, Roseville Brandon for, I believe, four years prior to this. And just has done an excellent job. She has a great attitude. She's well-liked over there. She's very angry that her husband got a job in Green Bay because, I said, well, can't he commute? So, you know, but apparently, apparently it's not in the cards. So she, and this is the kind of person she is, she wanted us to know, she doesn't have a position up there, but I have very, I'm very, very confident she'll find something because she's a great addition to our team. But she just wanted to give the district enough time to find somebody high quality, so I appreciate that. Debbie has already had this posted and we posted for two, so we'll have an opportunity to interview pending the board's approval and go for it and have hopefully some people for hire in April or May.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Hock? Second by Mr. Wodowski. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'm conscious that, like you say, there are, seems to be more and more needs for these kind of educators every year. And I would just hope that, you know, what is the, what is the candidate pool looking like? Is it?
We don't know yet. We don't know yet because it's just out there posted right now. I know from, how many did Samantha, how many did we have for the high school position?
Which time?
This time, not for, I mean, for the, for social studies.
Oh, yeah. Social studies, different story.
Yeah, but we had a hundred.
Hundred fifteen.
But the thing we did have is we have a lot.
Especially, it's much tougher.
Right, but we had a lot of people that had experience and that were very attractive from social studies that applies. So I'm hoping that we're gonna see some, hopefully some high-quality people. We'll see. It won't be the same, but this is the time to get into it. This is the time to hire right now before contracts are offered, so.
I'm certainly hoping that we have a much better time finding qualified people for these positions than we did for the tech ed department.
Ah, yeah, well, I think so. But we got the best tech ed department now.
I know.
Took a while. So, but that's, now, I'm not sure exactly what that pool's gonna look like, but this is the time to get into it because now people, veteran people, people have been in different, also people graduating, this is the time they're looking for jobs that are not under contract. And I think our environment and opportunities and that staff over there has created a very good name for themselves. Hopefully we do get a good pool.
I'm certain we're not the only district that has, you know, more and more demand on this kind of thing. So I'm just, I'm really concerned about being able to backfill these too because my wife made comments about both of these, that she was really disappointed to see that they're, because they were, she's had personal contact with both of them for some of the students that I've saved her and just had wonderful instances go up.
Yeah, so as life goes, we'll see what happens. So, but I really appreciate both of them getting the letters now. It's what, March? So this gets us out of the game, which is great.
Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Hock, yes. Wodowski?
Yes.
Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Orson Carey?
Last item on the agenda is discuss and consider long-term and short-term disability insurance contracts to Madison National Life through National Insurance Services.
Hey, Brad, can you explain this? Very easy decision?
Sure. Shortly after we switched from WEA to WPS for our health and we switched to Delta Dental for our dental, for our dental insurance, we decided to work with Keeven Pits again and bid out the disability, both the short term and the long term, and just see what's out there. And it was a good decision because we actually, we have the opportunity to go with Madison National Life through National Insurance Services. We can offer the same coverage at a savings to both the district and to the employees that are covered. For long-term disability, the annual premium would be fourteen thousand, four forty-six, which is a six thousand, over six thousand dollar savings to what we're paying WDA right now. And the short term, which is employee paid, the employees would pay, would save about ten percent of their annual premiums. And again, well, the rates would be locked in for three years and it is the same coverage, they're matching the coverage. So it is kind of a no-brainer.
And the reason we have the starting May first is because we have to give thirty days?
Thirty days, yep. If we, if you approve it tonight, then I can let WDA know tomorrow and it would go into effect on June first.
May first.
May first, sorry.
I keep thinking we can't save any more money on insurance.
Oh, you just wait.
Money on insurance.
You'll wait.
It's gonna be rough in this game.
And the service has gotten a little bit sluggish on the WDA side because they've lost the big portion, they've lost the open dental. So that kind of prompted us to just start looking and see what's out there. And then, you know, we thought even if we had matched premium rates, we might make a move, but this was, you know.
Excellent.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pila? I'll second that. Second by Mr. Chisholm. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna, just to be safe, I'm gonna declare potential conflict of interest and abstain.
So, roll call?
Okay. Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Wodowski?
Yes.
And Hock to abstain. Orson Carey?
And the last item, and one thing John, thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
See you around.
You too, Jen, appreciate it.
And I'm saving this for him because he gets to say, make the motion for the adjournment because I mean, he's last motion, so.
I'll make that motion.
Wodowski, I'll second. And roll call?
What time is it?
Nine, eight.
Eight thirty-five. Records, that's a record. Know that first record.
Mr. Wodowski?
Yes.
Hock, yes. Pila?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
And Duffy?
Yes.
Orson Carey?